Tom, I've been ready. Tom, could you hear me?
Yes, I can. I think we're ready.
All right, today is June 2nd, 2020, this regular city council meeting. I would like to make a act, the city manager, due to COVID-19 pandemic emergency, we have to handle our city council meeting different than we usually do due to the safety of staff and the public. So now I would like to ask our city manager to give us a brief explanation to the public. Thank you.
Good evening. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference video conference in compliance with state and county stay-at-home orders and as allowed by the Governor's Executive Order N-29-20, which allows for deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Members of the public will see the council members and city staff who are appearing via remote video telephone connections. City council meetings will be held by teleconference or video conference only until further notice. Today's agenda states that rather than attending in person, residents can submit written public comments via email to pubcom, that's P-U-B-C-O-M@cityofgalt.org, prior to the council meeting. Any written comments that were received will be read out loud during the city council meeting by the city clerk on the appropriate agenda item subject to the customary five-minute time limit. We will try to check the email for additional public comments during the meeting if feasible. We are also trying a new format that allows the public to provide live public comment using the Zoom webinar feature. Members of the public may use the link to enter the webinar as attendees. They should be able to use the raise their hand option in Zoom webinar to let us know if they would like to speak and who, excuse me, that they would like to speak and should do so when the mayor announces the time for public comment. We request, as we do at typical in-person council meetings, that speakers provide their name and address when they are called on to speak and their line is unmuted. Attendees should also see a lower hand feature if they change their mind and do not want to speak. If you do not see these features in the Zoom module you are using, it may be that your software is not up to date or because of other technical issues on the user's end. There will be an opportunity after the staff report for the public to provide public comment on special meeting agenda, excuse me, on meeting agenda items as well. Again, attendees via the Zoom webinar will need to raise their hand. The Zoom webinar details can be found on the city's agenda and the agenda can be found at www.cigalt.ca.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Call the meeting in order. Tina, may I have your room call, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Campion. Councilmember Campion. Councilmember Lamson. I see you, but.
She's on mute.
Yeah, I said here. And Mayor Sandu.
Here. Please rise the, for silent prayer and flag salute. Flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next agenda item is council, any approval, addition or deletion on this agenda?
You want me to read the replay statement?
Yeah, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. Meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, June 5th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, June 6th at 9:00 a.m. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you, Tina. Again, the agenda approval, addition and deletion, council member. You know, I would like to, I like, I would like to, I would like to suggest to the council, if we, you know, if we take off the agenda item number I2, is the city council procedural guideline regarding civil norms. I know this is very important, but tonight we have a graduation from both Galt High School and Prairie and other council member, including myself, we'd like to join as soon as possible. We can bring that the next meeting, if all the council member agree on that. Council member.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. It is an important item, but I do know that we, we all want to recognize our, our local graduates, and so I don't have a problem moving that as long as we have it on the next meeting agenda for the 16th.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. My reason was, you know, this, we maybe can go, but I like to, as everybody, this is very important, even this year they have prayed, I like to join, I think you'd like to join, the other council member. Other council member, any, any comment on that? Do you guys agree or?
I would agree if we want to put that on to the next council meeting, because I would like to join the graduation festivities also.
Sean Farmer.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, council member Campion out there. All right.
Councilmember Campion, his, his computer's downloading an update. He thinks it'll be about five minutes before he can drive.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Next agenda item is report from June 2nd, 2020, special meeting close session. We have a close session, 3 o'clock. I would like to ask our city manager any report on, on the close meeting, close session earlier.
I believe that our city attorney, Kimberly Hood, will provide that disclosure.
Okay, thank you.
I will. So yes, the city council held a special meeting close session earlier this afternoon pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 regarding the city manager position. There is no reportable action.
Thank you, Kimberly. Next agenda item is there is presentation, but there is no presentation. The public comments. Tina, please read the public comments and also explain about the Zoom webinar.
Okay, under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for briefly questions. Discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the state and social distancing guidelines, public comments may be submitted via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org and will be read out loud, subject to the customary five-minute limitation. Also, members of the public may participate electronically via with webinar ID 87811054207. And I believe we are taking Zoom comments first.
All right, Tina, any public comment?
I have nobody raising their hand at this moment.
Okay, thank you, Rose.
I do have public comments via PubCom, which I will read.
Okay.
So this public comment was received on Wednesday, May 20th, at 11:12 a.m., the day after our May 19th city council meeting. Do people, this is from Tara Wilson. Do people really want to open up without the correct plan? I always err on the side of caution because wisdom should always prevail rather than recklessness. All the old adages such as haste makes waste, do not put all your eggs in one basket, really are meaningful. Please abide by common sense. Remember, the Bible also says, thou shall not kill, so find some procedures that make common sense for all the people of Galt. This comment was received on Wednesday, May 20th, at 2:18 p.m. from Simone Pimentel, the day after the May 19th council meeting. Hello, I'm a resident of Galt and am ready to see our local businesses open back up. Businesses are not getting federal assistance and every day that goes by puts another business in jeopardy of not being able to financially recover. We are ready to safely open. Galt has only had 13 cases and no. This public comment was received on Wednesday, May 20th, at 2:31 p.m. from Karina Ritchie, a day after the May 19th city council meeting. Galt needs to reopen. Closing an entire city with only 13 cases of an illness defies logic. The numbers do not support such a drastic measure. At-risk citizens should stay home. Everyone else be able to go about their business. In the next election, I have no intention of voting for anybody who's supported closing California. This comment was received on Wednesday, May 20th, at 4:15 p.m., the day after the May 19th city council meeting, from Linda Starr. We are all trying to figure out what our new normal will be, and of course, safety is our first priority, but it does appear that we have financially flattened the curve in Galt. Kudos to our citizens for doing their part to accomplish, accomplish this. We believe that is time to reopen the businesses of Galt. Our job requires us to travel throughout the 48 states and we have been on the road for so long. Got into the lens into many towns across our country and see how they are finding their name. That all the businesses in Galt can reopen in a safe, responsible manner. Please do not abandon the business owners in Galt. This email was received on Wednesday, May 20th, at 4:17 p.m., the day after the May 19th city council meeting, from Joanne Testo. It only makes perfect sense to open up our town that has 13 cases and no deaths. I think we have done a great job in keeping the numbers low. With surrounding areas opening, our town should too. It's time now, please work on making it happen. These are the public comments received for today's meeting. Good evening, council and staff. My name is Maria Jimenez and I'm a resident of Galt. I'm writing to you to express my concerns about the council meeting that took place two weeks ago. I replayed the recording a couple of times to try to understand why procedural guidelines and council conduct was given so much more preference over real issues affecting our city and community. This is not the first time Vice Mayor Lozano has brought this up. Can council members not disagree? Can they not have a debate about issues affecting us? We are finally starting to get something other than 5-0 votes, and now you're saying it's a problem because they are disagreements. Yes, things may get heated sometimes, but no one has called anyone any names. They are just passionate as they should be. These new guidelines are not really new either, maybe just reworded. Council members are representing us. They are not kids that need to be told how to act. They are speaking with passion. There are 100 other things, Morton, more important than this conduct issue that are going on in our city and our country right now. I do not understand what Vice Mayor Lozano was so appalled and shocked by. Was it passion to speak up for our community? Please be transparent. Please show more concern about the livelihood of our businesses and their owners. It is a much more important discussion than the council's behavior and conduct, which has been completely normal. Okay, this email was received from Nina Thornton. Good evening, Mayor Sandu and members of the council. My name is Nina Thornton and I'm a resident of Galt, California. With the current social-political climate, there have been numerous undeniable cases of police brutality and injustices affecting the Black community. As a citizen of Galt, I would like to express concern regarding the safety of our Black and Brown community members. In light of recent events, there have been numerous calls to action about forming a militia. Many, many of these messages are threatening in nature. In the Facebook group called the Friendly Neighborhood Galt, many individuals have posted such messages. An example of such is when user Rebecca Mitchell-Grier stated, make sure your guns are locked and ready. In another post, user Rigo Colomeneris wrote, with that being said, sign me up to protect our city, I will definitely exercise my Second Amendment rights. There are countless messages and images that follow similar themes, taking justice into the civilian's hands. User Odin Young's call to action post of, in light of recent events, I'm forming a Galt militia. Message me if you want to join. Yes, it's constitutional. No, it isn't against the law. Has been met with an overwhelmingly positive response. The specialized police officers are already responsible for killing hundreds of Black individuals. It is needless to say that it is dangerous to have armed civilians, civilians with no anti-bias training, no de-escalation training and no background checks to enact vigilante justice on the perceived other. In the event of protesters arriving to our esteemed city, whether peaceful or not, these are militia groups will only serve to escalate conflict and may act indiscriminately. User Matt Woodward posted an image of stick people presumed to represent peaceful protesters like those who were demonstrating by marching in the streets with a text, all lives splatter dash keep you a asterisk asterisk out of the road. The words in the image are obviously a play on the movement Black Lives Matter, which aim to end police brutality and remind the general public that lives are just as important as everyone else's. By this militia group posting this image, they are already demonstrating an explicit bias against Black people. Mayor Sandu and council members, I request that not only this militia be put on the agenda to discuss and that someone is done to ensure the safety of people of color in the city. So then, next public comment received is from Zara Rodriguez, which is a carbon copy of the letter just read. My name is Zara Rodriguez, carbon copy. Next public comment is Norma Rodriguez with a carbon copy of the same letter. Next email is from Denise Cruz with a carbon copy of the same letter. Next email is from Alyssa Perez with a carbon copy of the same letter. Next is Kevin Sumner. I'm emailing to express concern over some recent comments made. The letter attached goes into much detail on this matter. Thank you for your consideration. With a carbon copy of the exact letter. Next one is Ola Rabah, carbon copy of the same letter. Next one is Suda Vazudivin, I apologize if that's incorrect, with a carbon copy of the same letter. Next one is Carolina Ayala, carbon copy of the same letter. Next one is Marcina Robles with a carbon copy of the same letter. Next one is Jasmine April. With a, that's her email. Her name in the, her email's Jasmine April, she goes Jasmine Trung Him with a carbon copy of the same letter. Next one is Lena Croissant with a carbon copy of the same letter. Next one is Zulima Corrales Franco with a carbon copy of the same letter. Next emails from Chantel Taylor. I will attach a file regarding some concerns in the Galt community. Please consider reading it thoroughly as the state of Black and Brown people in this town are at stake. Thank you for your time. With a carbon copy of the same letter. Jessica Lyon with the same letter. Randy Morton. Galt USA, today's still a day the Lord has made. I wish. I wish I could say something perfect to help us all come together in USA. I have no speech or preach, prefer that. I want you all to know that I care about you and your families. I am thankful for our members. I received a great quote today. When we are hurting, we feel anger and sadness. I want us to share our love as people of Galt, united for solutions. And that is it right now.
Anybody on the Zoom webinar? Rose.
I have no hands that are raised at this time.
Thank you.
Oh, I have one hand raised by Harry Wenzel.
Okay.
Give me a moment. Harry Wenzel, go ahead with your public comment. Harry Wenzel, I muted you. Go ahead and unmute yourself on your side and go ahead with your public comment.
Okay, I was saying, I was trying to adjust my computer. I haven't watched this through the Zoom, and I accidentally raised my hand. Sorry about that, but thank you.
I will go ahead and lower it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other hands raised at this time.
All right, I just want a very quick comment on the public comment. This comment is very serious, and all the council taking any comment comes from the public is very serious. And we're working with the safety of our citizen. And on this one, I would like to ask our city manager, when his agenda come with the COVID update. If he can give us a like in brief explanation about how we're working with the safety. These things going on, how we're working as a safety to the people. So this, Tom, I'd like to be, can you add something on a brief statement on that agenda item?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. Uh, next agenda item is a report by city council members on regional board, commission, and committee. Vice Mayor Lozano, you have anything?
I do. I have an update on the Secog meeting that I attended via Zoom on the twenty-first. Along with closed session items, we approved the budget unanimously at Secog. Uh, we're going to be using about four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars in reserves to balance the budget for this year. Uh, the reason we're doing that is because there's some unknowns as it relates to funding from pastor funding and the COVID nineteen issue. We had a couple of retiree resolutions. Kirk Trost, who has been the legal counsel for Secog for fifteen years and was chief operating officer for eight years, retired along with Luis Elizondo, who was a thirty-year employee. Talked about COVID nineteen impact on Secog and the Secog partners, the budget and fiscal impacts, staff capacity and bandwidth, as and then as it relates to project, possible project delays for Secog. Uh, some of the threats that we talked about were unemployment, the transportation project revenue decline, and and then also the loss of retail and how it affects transportation funding and and transportation period. Uh, one of the things that was discussed is the need to increase the broadband system capacity as they're going to be at Secog, they're going to be talking to stakeholders about additional telework. And so the broadband systems looked at as almost like a commuter system. And and so the thought is to put some infrastructure in place to increase that capacity. One of the interesting things, and the last thing I'll leave with is, uh, they talked about the vehicle miles traveled pre-COVID nineteen, and that was about sixty-one thousand miles a day in the region. And on May fifteenth, two thousand twenty, they estimate it was at seventeen thousand. So as you can see, there's been a significant decrease, probably about, what's that, sixty percent decrease in 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 vehicle miles traveled. So it is important that we recognize all of these things and how that affects our economy moving forward. So that's all I have to report from the Secog meeting. Uh, we will be having a Policy and Innovation Committee meeting on June eighth. I'll report back on that when it's at our next council meeting. Thanks.
Council member Lamson.
Uh, yes, we had our air quality board meeting, and we're actually still working on our budget. We have, we had, we're waiting to hear some things from Secog, as a matter of fact. So it looks like we've got that information. We also had some presentations on how to lower the temperatures in your cities. One way is, of course, lighter colored roofs and lighter covered roadways. So instead of having black roadways, not having white, but like cement color like you see on I five, which could actually really help to lower the temperature of your city by a couple of degrees. Um, so we're working on getting some funding and grants and helping cities implement that. And that's, and then we had a youth commission. Um, we tried to have one last night because we haven't been able to meet, but we only had five um, of the ten youth commissioners. So we're still, it closed for who, the applicants. So we should be looking at the applicants for next year and see who would like to apply for that commission, and I'll keep you guys posted on that. And that's about it.
Council member Farmer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just to report that Sacramento County Library Authority Board passed anonymously the budget that was proposed. And that also, two nights ago, that one of the central library branches in Sacramento unfortunately received some damage and vandalism from some of the activity that's happening down there. That they've, they mobilized quickly to have it repaired, so it's good news. Uh, that's about all I have to report. Thank you.
Council member Campion, are you out there?
Yeah, I'm out here. I'm having some trouble with my computer. It says it's unstable, my connection. So I, every time I seem to put on the video, it, I seem to fade out. So I, I will be here, but I'll just be muted or unmutated as the case may be.
Okay. Anything on, on this?
No updates, no.
All right, I have nothing to report on this agenda item. Uh, next agenda item is information consent calendar. Uh, Tina, can you help me to read that? G one through three.
Sure. Receive and file warrants for the period ending May twentieth, two thousand twenty. Adopt a resolution one indicating the city's intention to renew its corporation agreement, cooperation agreement with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency for administration of the city's community development block grant activities for an additional three-year period. And two, authorizing the city manager to execute a favorable cooperation agreement with Sheera, subject to city attorney approval. Three, accept the treasurer's report as submitted.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I make a comment real quick?
Yeah, sure.
I had a question for the clerk. Um, I didn't seem to see the minutes that were pushed from last meeting. Are they?
Yeah, they'll be next minute. Time gets away from us.
Okay, so they'll be next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, approve the consent consent calendar as a presenter. Uh, move.
Second.
Okay, it's moved by council member Lamson and second by Vice Mayor Lozano. Tina may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Yes.
Council member Farmer?
Aye.
Council member Campion?
Aye.
Council member Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passes by five-two-zero. Thank you. Uh, next agenda item, H, schedule matter and notice of public hearing. H one, subject master fee schedule update. Ms. Tyson, our city manager.
Uh, our finance director, Claire Tyson, will provide the staff report on this item.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'll go through the next three items together. Um, these are in relation to the materials that were sent out to you a couple of weeks ago and posted on the city's website. What we'll be covering this evening will be the master fee schedule, the capital improvement plan, and the annual budget with appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty-one twenty-two. These will follow the actions or the the information that was provided in the transmital letter and the workshop last Tuesday evening. Um, I also have a couple of our managers online to answer any questions. Um, Michelle Neely, our budget revenue manager, and Matthew Boring, our accounting manager. So I'll get started with the master fee schedule update. The, the main activity in this, in the main changes in this have to do with the recreation fees that were modified by the city council back in November. So those changes are implemented in this fee schedule along with the community development fees that were adjusted in the December meeting by council, along with other actions that were taken by council, prior actions having to do with impact fees, Measure A rates, utility rates. Um, it, there is also an increase on many of the fees for the CPI. The annual CPI increase this year is two point four-five percent. And those are implemented in many of the fees, and they're identified in the fee schedule. With that, I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
Vice Mayor Lozano? Or, or any council member wants to comment on?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead, Sean.
Uh, I just had a couple of quick questions. Um, I would ask if Mr. Arias could clarify something that was brought to my attention about the minor use permit. There was some, some, maybe a typo or an error that was brought to my attention. If you could explain what that was. Conversation.
Uh, sure. Basically, in what was presented to the council at the special meeting last week, there was an error in a couple of the planning-related and building-related fees. And you had questioned, I think it was the minor use permit and the amount of increase. And what was shown is an additional increase from what was presented or what was approved at the, at the end of last year. So it kind of incorrectly just gave it another substantial increase when all we were proposing to do was the CPI increase. So we have since adjusted that fee and a couple others to be just CPI increases and not those significant increases that you had brought to our attention at that last meeting.
So this doesn't affect the mathematics, the budget, it was just a clerical error?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Um, and then one other question I just had was, like here, just looking through my notes. Um, uh, just quickly, and this was something I think I asked you about, Chris, as well, but I just wanted you to touch it really fast. On the, uh, on the permitting, there's, there's some things in there about the technology upgrade. You know what I'm talking about, we spoke. Just wanted you to kind of, I had a citizen reach out to me asking if there was some small fees that are on when you pull permits that had to do with a technology program recovery, technology maintenance. And this is playing with Chris, with those are real fast.
Yeah, there's basically two, well, I guess three. There is a capital acquisition replacement fee or CARF, which is applied to all permits. And that's a surcharge intended to recover capital acquisition replacement of existing computer-related equipment. The next one is a technology program recovery fee, and that's intended to basically provide us with funding to upgrade our computer software system to run permitting. And then the next fee is a technology maintenance fee. And basically, that's to recover our cost for regular maintenance and also our fee to run the program. So we have a software permitting program called I-Works, and we pay an annual fee to them, to this company, to operate that. So that last fee basically helps us recoup our costs associated with running that program. So those are the three computer-related fees for building permit.
Okay, and 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 these are all fees, these are not new. Um, I, I see here that these were passed with resolutions from, looks like nineteen eighty-nine to two thousand and seven by city council that, that far back, so, and I don't see any case. So I just, just for the sake of the citizen who brought this to my attention, inquiring, these are not anything additional?
No, no, and, um, Mr. Farmer, I did a little bit of background work too, and those type of fees are not uncommon in most cities. Most cities have very similar fees, and that one fee in particular that you questioned, uh, we're, we're kind of on par with the region. I mean, some were a little bit lower than us, but El Grove was significantly higher for a similar type permit. So we're, we're kind of where we need to be with that permit fee in question.
Thank you. And lastly, the only other thing I have in the whole fee schedule that was just that, um, I, I do want to recognize that um, I, I was very happy that none of the sports programs, uh, were, you know, hit the chopping block. I, I know we, uh, you know, I know that Tom and the finance team and everybody else at work, and Armando and his staff, everybody involved in that, that portion with Parks and Rec, you know, uh, we're adding a CPI in there. Um, and really, that was kind of, you know, one of the mechanisms, sure, that was going to save the programs overall. And, um, so, you know, this is something I've been passionately passionate about in the past, and, you know, I have questioned increases and kind of, you know, got down in the weeds with some, some of those things and fought for some. And so I just wanted to say that I was, I was happy that those weren't, um, you know, that I didn't have to, uh, you know, we didn't have to get down to that, that was going to be some hard choices. So thank you for that, for all those that are involved in the budget. And, um, that, that's all I really had at the moment. Thank you.
Any other council member, any other comment or discussion on this agenda item?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, do you have a comment? I finally found my unmute button here.
All right, go, go ahead, my.
I just have a quick question, I think maybe for Finance Director, maybe even the city manager. Um, as I heard it and as I understood it today, and what was originally, the, the master fee schedule was really originally presented. We're not doing anything with this that we haven't already done in terms of increases outside of the CPI and then also the, um, the, the clerical error that the, the citizen caught. Um, is that, is that correct? I mean, in terms of raising fees or any, anything like that?
Right, that is correct. The only increases here should be either actions already taken by council, um, like the five-year plans having to do with utilities or the CPI increase, and the intention is that that, those are the only increases.
Okay, okay. And then the, the, the one, the, the two major increases that we did this year were back in September and then also back in, uh, November. Is that correct?
The fee schedule adjustments were actually November and December. The September was the budget adjustment.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay, so.
Council member, want to make any comment?
I'd just like to thank the staff for putting all this together. I know it was hard with everything else and, but it's a lot of work and appreciate you taking the time to do all the research and get this together for us.
Welcome.
Thank you. And I'm agree with the Vice Mayor Lozano's comment and Sean Farmer. You know, this fee increase is already in the system, is already there. So there is no, almost no other piece increase there, maybe. There may be a minor. So I'm happy with this master fee on schedule. And now I would like to open for public hearing. Anybody from the public want to make a comment? Tina, there is any comment or anything on the Zoom webinar? Rose?
I have no hands raised at this time for a public comment.
And I have no written comment.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing. And if there is no discussion among.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor. You know, so the first part of Claire's presentation where she stopped for questions was on the master fee schedule. Or is it your intention to take these items one by one? Because we also have the budget and the capital improvement budget.
That's that's why my attention is, but if you want to direct me something else, we can.
The only thing I wouldn't do then, though, is I think maybe because we have the public hearing noticed for all of them at one time, maybe we should go through the rest of her presentation and then close the public hearing.
Okay, all right. So let's go.
Okay, so I'll move on to capital improvement plan. I'll go fairly quickly through this, but basically the capital improvement plan is a five-year plan that provides for the city's anticipated capital projects. They're listed individually in the document you have. There's also a fair amount at the back of the document of details on each project that you can kind of go through. There is also a section at the very back in the appendix section that talks about planned activities, planned projects that are beyond the five-year. And the first two years of this CIP plan are developed for the budget are included in the appropriations. And the CDD staff has reviewed this plan for the general plan conformity. And the planning commission will be provided this at the next meeting. Deferred maintenance projects do still continue. I have a couple of slides here on significant projects. But we've kind of talked about all of these before. The one that really is the biggest is the Walker Park improvements, and that is from state funding. Many of these projects are from some form of state funding or utility funding or impact fees. I can slow down and talk about any of these projects, but I think we've kind of talked about each one of them individually. So that is my concluding remarks for the capital improvement plan.
Thank you, Claire. Any council member, any comment or any discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, real quick?
Yeah.
I just wanted to say, Claire, this, I don't have any directly any questions. I just want this, all this information about these projects is going to be posted on the city's website where the public can view all the information that the council has has been privy to at our budget workshop. And now all that will be on there for people to review if they have, want to see what we're talking about, correct?
Yes, this material has been on the website for the last two weeks. After tonight, we will update it based on council action and repost. So it'll be back up there.
All right, I had some people acquiring about certain projects, so I just thought I'd mention that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Any council member? If it's not, then I have a question. Is Mike selling out there, right?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, Mike, I, you know, that's the capital improvement project walnut over change, right?
Correct.
This to discuss is can be approximate when four, five years, right?
I'm sorry, Mayor, could you repeat that? You broke up a little bit.
No, I'm talking about that CPA that's project walnut overpass.
Yes.
What is the timeline? Last time I think believe that you mentioned it's we came for five year or more, right?
Yeah, for actual construction, I mean, we've got, you know, some preliminary work to do that's probably going to take the next two to three years. And then, you know, if if we can get through the hoops and find the funding, we would go into the design of the project. And that'll probably take maybe a couple of years or so. There would, you know, likely be some right away that we would need to acquire. Right away is always a bit of a question mark. So it can take some time. It can go quickly too. So but all that said, to get through the preliminary planning and environmental and then the design, I think you're looking at three to five years. And then, you know, construction, if the funding is there, would probably take another couple of years or so. So I think, you know, a a fast track timeframe is probably in the seven to maybe eight-year timeframe. And probably a normal timeframe is probably closer to 10. The big asterisk I would put on all that, though, is it will depend on how fast development occurs too. So if development is, you know, is really taking off, particularly industrial, that might, you know, generate a stronger urgency for that interchange, then it could could be expedited probably a couple of years or so.
And this project also depend on the Caltrain too, right? Or the.
Very much so, yes. Anytime you're you're going to, you know, create or modify an access to a freeway, you obviously have to get Caltrans's buy-in, so.
All right, thank you. That's it.
Okay, you're welcome.
All right. If council member, no discussion on this one, I'd like to ask Ms. Tyson to move to the next item.
Okay, great. So the next item is the annual budget. This is a two-year budget, fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 22. The themes for this budget, the important elements are, these are, this is a balanced budget. General fund contributes to parks and recs and LLDs, and that is part of the balancing. There are no operational improvements or enhancements. The frozen positions that were acted on by council back in September, they remain frozen for both years and the service levels remain the same. This budget was put together pre-COVID. And that provides certain information that is helpful to us. By keeping the picture very clear on what the pandemic may have economically and whether the revenues will materialize or not. This will take some time to know and for all of the impacts to be analyzed and and determined. This does have a post-COVID-19, there's discussion and a contingency that we've created based on the knowledge we had at the point that we created this budget. So I'm going to go fairly quickly through some of these slides. You've seen them before. Citywide budget for 21 and 22. The revenues, $50,000,010, 246, 58, 409, 253, and then the expenditures, $40,716, 844 for the first year and $41,858, 164 for the second year. The difference there is primarily revenues that we receive that we have to accumulate to do larger projects primarily around capital items. And that's why the citywide looks a little skewed. When we, when we take a look at the general fund budget, however, we see that the operation, excuse me, property tax makes up about 45% of our revenue. The sales tax makes up about 21%. All of the rest of the items are fairly small. These don't necessarily fluctuate much year over year. But in the pre-COVID general fund revenues, the increases in the first year are really around property tax. There are some sales tax increases. TOT, that anticipated the days and best western expansions. Obviously, we're going to have some impact from COVID for that. We'll talk about in a minute. Franchise fees went up, building permits based on planned growth, building plan check fees, engineering plan check. And then the rents having to do with the new property that was just purchased. And then some miscellaneous fees. The total increase is 1.6 million. In the next year, in 2122, there's a little less of increases, but there's still significant property tax. Sales tax slows down a bit. That is primarily due to the influx of online sales in the county pool in the first year, and then it kind of smoothes out in the second year. And then, of course, building fees, we continue to expect expansion in our building. So that increase in revenue is 736,000. On the expenditure side of general fund, there's a lot of numbers here. But what is, I think, significant on these numbers is there's very, very little increase. The expenditures are holding steady based on the action council took in September with the budget cuts. All departments are reflecting some minor changes that has to do with mandated increases like contracts that are already engaged in it that have escalators, that sort of thing. But all in all, the percentages between departments remains the same. On the expenditure side, the significant changes are basically approved contracts by council, including salary provisions. This budget does continue, as I mentioned before, the frozen positions and the no operational expansions, continues contributions to parks and rec and LLDs, and includes the new contingency for COVID based on our estimates. So briefly, I'll talk a little bit about those COVID impacts. We anticipate that we're going to have some lost revenue. Sales tax early estimates, a 14% drop in fiscal year 21 and a 12% drop in fiscal year 22. We will be monitoring these as as we're reopening. But it'll take some time for us to really know what the impacts are as the data flows from the businesses to the state and then to us. TOT estimates, we estimate a drop of 25% in the first year and optimistic recovery in the second year. Refuse franchise fees are expected to drop in 21 due to business impacts. And business license, also, we expect a slight drop. Vehicle in lieu expected to drop in the second year slightly. So from those conversations, then the next table shows those decreases that are anticipated. And also, at the bottom of that schedule, it shows our anticipated decrease in the market revenue. Obviously, the market will be impacted by this. Although we, in the first year, we're anticipating an impact to revenue and then an associated impact to expenditures. As time goes on, that that net impact may or may not materialize, but we'll be monitoring it. And then in the second year, we expect another year of a slow recovery for those market impacts from the COVID-19 changes. Oh, I should mention that the total at the bottom here are numbers for both years that have been set aside in a special contingency for those ongoing reviews. So overall, the general fund, the structural changes that the council has made in the past four years, and specifically in the fall of 2019, have really positioned this city to weather the current COVID crisis better than most. And I can't impress upon how important that has been in this process. The reduction of services that were embedded in the last four years, and particularly in the fall, they continue. And we are anticipating increases in the building revenue. If we had had that and not had the COVID-19, we probably would be discussing those frozen positions and the associated services. But instead, we've set up these contingencies for the COVID impacts and we'll be monitoring those and reporting back to council. The next slide shows the general fund anticipated balance for fiscal year 21 and 22. There's a fair amount of numbers here. The biggest thing I think that's important here is that the available fund balance at the end of each year listed here, there's not much change to it. And that is a very positive thing considering where we were a couple of years ago. I'm not going to go through all of those numbers. I'm just going to go ahead and move on to the Parks and Recreation Fund. Obviously, that has an impact on general fund. But I did want to mention there is an increase that's been embedded in this budget for both years for the billboard rent, $100,000 a year. Recreation program income has increased slightly. This has to do with the rates the council approved previously. The Galt Market revenue decreased this pre-COVID-19, but was maintained in fiscal year 22. And then, of course, the COVID impacts are expected to have a significant impact on the market, a net of $300,000 in fiscal year 21 and a net of $254,000 in fiscal year 22. We'll see if those materialize. And then on the expenditure side, Parks and Recreation had an impact from the minimum wage increases in both years. And then personnel personnel cost allocations, we did do a revision of all of the cost allocations throughout the city. And so there are some adjustments reflected in Parks and Rec and some of the other departments. Year over year decreases, when you look at the schedules, are primarily due to on-time capital projects that completed in the 20-year. And all other costs are holding steady. And we will continue to watch the cost of the park landscaping and the potential COVID-19 impacts on Parks and Rec. The next schedule gives you some of the numbers based on that discussion. I'm not going to really go through all of those. You're fairly familiar with these schedules. Just a summary of revenues, those contributions from the market that help our Parks and Recreation, and then the contribution from general fund, and then the expenditures are listed here. The next section I'll take a look at is the lighting and landscape districts. As you know, the first two districts, Northeast and West Side, both have no escalator. They were developed in the 90s. And so there is no cost of living basically in in these rates. The third one, which is the district number three, does have an escalator in it, although it's not sufficient to cover current costs. So most city residents are not covered by either any of these LLDs. And so the result is that the expenses have no specific revenue identified to these rates. And the general fund covers those costs and covers deficits in the LLDs. The the schedule with the numbers, sorry, can you, yeah, advance one more? That schedule shows these numbers, what are anticipated in all three of the lighting and landscape districts, and shows the negative impacts on the first two districts and shows that, and those negative amounts, of course, are being funded by general fund. And then on the last number three, it shows that gradual decline of that fund balance. And then on the last number three, it shows that gradual decline of that fund balance. So eventually, the general fund will be subsidizing that. The next section has to do with our enterprise funds. There's three slides on this, but really the, the main message here is that there's really minor impacts to all of these. And the impacts to the budgets for any of these funds are really around requirements that are necessary, like the water fund. They have to replace certain kinds of equipment or certain kinds of infrastructure on a regular basis. They may have mandates that require them to do certain activities. So stormwater has very little, water has a few items there having to do with those requirements. And then the wastewater fund has some regulatory requirements along with some improvements to be made, some maintenance and replacement of a couple of pieces of equipment. So Tom, I just flipped through all three of those. On the streets. Let you catch up. So the Streets and Transportation Fund. This is this is from you, utility increases are part of this budget. There are also some increases for specific supplies necessary. And then there is a thermal painting equipment purchase being recommended in this budget along with a half of the cost of a vehicle. This is money coming from the gas tax and being utilized through this fund. In addition, in this fund, there's money coming from Transportation Development Act. And similarly, it's covering certain kinds of personnel costs. There is an increase for the city's share of the Gulf South County Transit Service costs. And that's an agreement with the county. And then any cost overruns are funded by the Sacramento Transit Authority Fund. They all work together. The next fund that I want to mention is the Measure R Fund. As we know, that that's a special transaction and use tax revenue source that the citizens pay on certain kinds of products. They are to be used for public safety, specifically our police department, and there's a list there of allowable costs in support of their activities. This fund is, the sales tax is holding pretty steady. There are no significant decreases from the COVID nineteen, at least not anticipated at this point. The expenditures continue to increase greater than the pace of the revenue, and that has to do with personnel costs. This fund is not presented as a balanced budget in the upcoming two years. However, there are significant, there, there are funds in the balance that provide the ability to replace vehicles, and that's embedded in the year two of this fund. It's recommended that over the course of the next couple of years, that we take a look at a five-year long-range financial plan for this fund to avoid any deterioration of the fund balance. Right now, that fund balance is pretty healthy. And the imbalance between revenue and expenditure is not significant at this point. So just to recap, based on input from the council in the study session, this recap is partially from the transmittal letter and partially from that input. So our next steps are the COVID nineteen, monitor the impacts and report back to council. Building growth, we will validate the revenue and related costs over time. Evaluation of longstanding frozen positions for possible elimination or reclassification will be done. And reinstatement of temporarily frozen from the fall of two thousand nineteen dependent on revenue to support those services. Pension obligations are valued, and the net pension liability paydown is dependent on new revenues, but that paydown continues to occur annually. Enhanced revenue to be pursued to fund core ongoing operations, critical deferred maintenance projects and services to the community. So with that, if there are any questions, I'm available, my staff is available, or we can move on to the public hearing.
Council member, anybody, any comment or discussion on this?
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Farmer.
I may have asked you this again, or I may have asked you this before in the budget workshop, but and maybe Tom can ask this or yourself, what, when, when would you anticipate we will see the, the actual reports to see the hard data on the sales tax from the months from the shutdown and what impact they had?
I think we're, yeah, I think we're anticipating that for the quarter, which was April, May and June of two thousand twenty, so the current quarter that we're in, which is going to be that first quarter where we take the big hit with all the stay-at-home orders and and the like, that we're anticipating seeing that, say, sometime in November. When it, when it makes it to us from the state, and then the first quarter of our fiscal year, which ends up being the third quarter of the calendar year, because our fiscal year runs July to June as opposed to January to December. That first quarter of the fiscal year would likely be available to the city by January.
Okay.
And, and that's going to be an important quarter for the city to really assess what is, is happening, the length of time the recovery is taking, you know. We, we remain cautiously optimistic that perhaps that quarter will perform better than what the analysts think. But, you know, it's, it's a bit of an unknown. And so we've worked with our sales tax consultant and with California, followed guidance from California City Finance and the League of California Cities in establishing our revenue projections.
So you're, just to, so the, for the audiences watching, your contingency number that you built into this, your COVID nineteen contingency was based on the best actual estimates from those agencies and those people that you mentioned. So as long as those reports don't come in, you know, being significantly different than that number as far as being over that number, then we should be okay. If, but at that time, we could then make any, once we know that data, then we could, you know, assess whether or not we didn't make any changes at that time.
Yeah, I, I think that that's the prudent thing to do at this point. If the city wants to have the best chance of living under a balanced budget is let's let some of this play out, you know, even though we're all chomping at the bit to be back to the way, you know, we used to live and work and, and do all those things right now. The reality is, unfortunately, we're, we're really in, in the very early stages of COVID nineteen when we take a look at it, it from the long view, which is what are all of its effects going to be? Not only health effects, but its economic impacts and things like that. And so it, it's, it's an unfortunate issue of timing. We're just not going to know some of that until, say, the first of the year. And, and if we perform better and, and thing that the economy performs better, I think that the city will be in a very good position to make some different decisions at that time.
And then just real quick, just ballpark, because I don't have the figure in front of me. What was the COVID contingency number, the total number that you'd built in for that?
For FY twenty one, which begins on January first, it's seven hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars. And for FY twenty two, it's six hundred and seventy three thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. That's all the questions I have.
All right. Any other council member?
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment, try to kind of piggyback on that. I, I was involved in a webinar the other day regarding economic recovery and, and what, what's going to go on in the state. And there was a pretty significant firm that talked about when the gross domestic product of California returned to pre-COVID nineteen, and their estimation was in the third quarter of two thousand twenty four. Now, I mean, that's, that's pretty far out, and it's, it's, it's kind of shocking to hear that. But you know, when you look around and you talk to businesses and and people that are doing business, business models are changing slightly for some, or for many. And, and the, and the money is beginning to roll in a lot more than they anticipated, just because they've done some of that adjustment of the business model. So I think my point to all of that is, is I think we really, really need to keep an eye on it very closely. Because even in the professional world, outside of our consultants, people are, you know, on both ends of the spectrum. And, and so it's going to be really important that we, that we nail that down as soon as we can and ensure that we have enough money in the, in the COVID nineteen reserve to really address some of those issues. So you will hear that stuff out there like I did, that, you know, the economy or GDP is not going to come back till twenty twenty four. But then you talk to business owners and they're, you know, making, you know, revenues are coming in a lot stronger than they thought to at this point. So we're just going to, again, my point is, I think we're just going to have to keep an eye on it real close.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Campion, do you have anything?
No, nothing more to add other than what we've already discussed in the workshop and what's been discussed so far. So I really don't have anything else to add, other than to thank staff for a great job. Thank you.
Councilmember Lanson, did you have anything?
Thank you. I think we've covered everything I have questions on.
Thank you, everyone. And the same thing is, is the budget is very much, very clean. And thank you, Tom, and thank you, Ms. Tyson. Now about the public hearing, any, any public comment out there? Tina or anything on the webinar, anybody on the Zoom back?
I believe we have to do a public comment on each item. I mean, a public hearing on each item.
All right, the item number one.
I have not received any, oh, you opening it? I'm sorry.
You know, master fee schedule update, you have any public comment or?
Yeah, I think we, Tina, I think we've been conducting the public hearing as we have moved along, and we've accommodated the staff report on all three items within that public hearing.
Oh, okay.
So at this point, Kimberly, I believe the mayor closed the public hearing or, excuse me, accept public comment.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll keep the public hearing open and accept public comment.
And I have no, at this time.
I have a written comment on the budget. And this is from Randy Morton, Galt Fitness Pro. Please adjust our funding for our police. It needs to be adjusted. Our police were shaking in my office, twenty to three rioters. Thank Todd and the officers for protecting us. It's not safe for people. We need to worry about our safety.
Thank you. Any other comment, written comment on Zoom webinar?
I have no hands raised at this time for, on the Zoom.
So if there are nobody public comment, nobody out there, I'd like to close the public here. And this is the last chance, all the council member, any, any comment on this item, then we move forward one by one item to vote on that. Is there a city manager?
Yes.
Thank you. Discussion from any council member. Tina, can you help me to read the recommended action? One, two, three on item H.
Adopt a resolution approving the master fee schedule update for public services for the fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty twenty one.
Do we have a motion out there?
I moved.
Second.
Okay, it's moved by Councilmember Farmer, second by Councilmember Lanson.
Excuse me, it was moved by Vice Mayor Lozano.
Okay, sorry, but could you do me a favor if somebody make a motion, can you raise your hand or name? You know, sometimes I'm talking, it might be difficulty on my computer, something I cannot tell, apologize for that. All right, motion moved by Vice Mayor Lozano, second by Councilmember Lanson. Tina, may I have a vote, roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion. Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye, motion passes five to zero. Tina, may I have a next item number two?
Adopt a resolution approving the proposed capital improvement plan update for fiscal years twenty twenty through twenty one through twenty twenty four through twenty five, and appropriating funds for the project budgets in fiscal years twenty twenty through twenty one and twenty twenty one through twenty two.
May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Move by Vice Mayor Lozano. Anybody second?
Second.
Is second by Councilmember Lanson. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion. Councilmember Campion.
Campion, are you out there?
You drop off?
Tina, go ahead, proceed.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes by five to zero. Councilmember Campion is absent. May I have a next agenda item, the?
Mr. Mayor was temporarily.
Tina, he, he's back. I, I think he's, can you ask him?
Yes, your vote on the CIP?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
So motion pass five to zero. Tina, could you read that?
Receive staff reports, solicit public input, three, consider approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty one and twenty twenty one through twenty two annual budgets. And four, adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty one and twenty twenty one through twenty two annual budgets with appropriations and approve the fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty one, California constitutional appropriations limit.
Thank you. Do we have motion?
Mayor.
All right, motion by Councilmember Farmer.
Mr. Mayor, I have a, I have a comment, actually. Right. Move them out, move.
So you have a comment or you're going to make?
Yes, I have a comment. I thought it would be okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just before, before we move to approve this, I just want to make a quick comment, just so I don't have to circle back on it later regarding some of the comments that were made about the police. I just want to state, you know, that our budget, almost half of our budget goes to the police department, which is a substantial, over six million dollars. And there is actually an increase from, from fiscal year twenty twenty one to twenty one, twenty two with a slight increase on that percentage. So Galt is a very So Galt is a very, you know, heavy on the police budget side. It always has been. And I just wanted to state that for those residents out there that, you know, that's a concern. So with that, I do move to approve this.
Okay.
Second, second by Vice Mayor Lozano. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye, motion passes by five to zero. Next agenda item, I, regular calendar, City Manager's Office, update on COVID-19.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The COVID-19 update for this particular public meeting, as of this afternoon, Sacramento County had 1,439 COVID cases, 58 deaths. There were 15 cases in Galt. San Joaquin County is reporting 982 COVID case, COVID-19 cases and 35 deaths. Under the current status of the health order issued by the State of California and the County of Sacramento and effective May 28th, specified businesses have been authorized under those public health orders to reopen so long as they follow social distancing guidelines identified by the California Department of Public Health and the County Department of Public Health. Under these new health orders, approximately 89% of Galt businesses can reopen if they institute social distancing guidelines in protection of their customers and their employees. The county has been authorized to implement, to fully implement tier two of the California resilience roadmap. Essentially, these current health orders allow the following businesses to reorder, to reopen, excuse me. Dine-in restaurants, so long as they follow the prescribed social distancing guidelines. Places of worship for religious services with attendance limitations. And that attendance limitation is 25% of a building's occupancy or up to 100 attendees, whichever is lower, upon approval by the County Health Department. In-store retail shopping, so long as social distancing guidelines for that sector are followed. Hair salons and barber shops, which technically are in stage three of the governor's reopening roadmap, may reopen, but they may reopen with modifications, including mandatory face coverings for both barbers or stylists and clients. Permitted services at these facilities include haircuts, hair coloring, blowouts, wig maintenance, hair relaxing treatments. Salon activities cannot be done with, that cannot be done with face coverings on both the worker or client. And that require the touching of a client's face, such as shaving, facial waxing, threading, eyelash services and facials remain prohibited at this time in all counties. Nail salons also remain closed as of the date of the staff report. It continues today, as a matter of fact, pursuant to the health order. The following is a listing of staff activities and general information. The city's emergency management team meets weekdays to discuss, every weekday to discuss the latest information and events. This is a slight change. Prior to the Memorial Day week, weekend, we were meeting every day, seven days a week. Effective with Memorial Day, we have moved that to every weekday. The city is operating a face mask distribution program for local businesses. The city made a resource request through the California Department of Emergency Services for face masks, and we received tens of thousands of them for distribution within the the community. And so businesses can obtain those face masks by contacting the Galt Police Department. It is on our website, on our COVID-19 page. The city's economic development manager has been keeping the COVID-19 business resources page of the city's website up to date with information on stimulus programs, tax relief, small business fund information and Families First information. The economic development manager has also sent out local business email newsletters with similar information and also information regarding opening guidelines for the various business sectors, as well as where to find that information on the state's website. As I reported in my bi-weekly on Friday, the, and that bi-weekly report is on our website, on our homepage. Last week, the governor announced that the state will be issuing guidance soon to 48 counties, that those 48 counties have made certain attestations to the state. And the governor indicates that they may, those 48 counties may move into tier three of the California resilience roadmap. It's the reopening roadmap, which will allow those counties to determine the timing of their movement through tier three, so long as they follow the state guidelines on how to make those determinations. As the governor said, the state determines how, the counties will determine the the timing. Based on the governor's statements, this will authorize the Sacramento County Health Officer to determine the timing of tier three business reopenings, as that may apply in the city of Galt. And so after the governor's comments on Friday, I contacted the county health officer, who on Friday afternoon indicated that they were trying to determine exactly when the the county, excuse me, the State Department of Public Health would be issuing that particular guidance that would then then allow the county to move forward into adjusting the health orders for tier three. So as we understand it today, the county's still waiting for the governor's office to issue that guidance. And as soon as they do, staff will be working with the county health officer to determine the potential for the timing of opening the remaining businesses in Galt that would qualify under tier three reopenings. Tier three includes those businesses and the type of business that are the highest risk. The governor did specifically point out last Friday that California, in his words, is not at all ready to move into tier four, which includes large crowds, festivals, sporting events for spectators and the like. Also in your packet this evening is, and this was requested by the council at your your last meeting. We included a copy of the resolution that had been adopted by the city of Atwater. And so that is there if the council wishes to discuss it. We also included a letter from the California Office of Emergency Services to Yuba County, which identifies that there can be problems or issues, consequences, is the word I'm looking for, for moving in a way, if a jurisdiction, in this case, it was a letter to Yuba County. But if jurisdictions move inconsistent with the state or county health orders, there can be consequences for doing that. And and that letter was included just to set forth that fact, that 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 issue. And to give you a backdrop, the resolution, a resolution like Atwater's versus what took place in in Yuba County. With that, that concludes my COVID-19 update. And I leave it to the council to either ask questions or engage in discussion on that.
Thank you. Councilmember, anybody have any comment, any discussion on this? Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, I wanna, I just want to thank the city manager for bringing this back to us. It certainly, well, and I appreciate the, the, some mostly daily updates on the, on the, on the COVID-19 and what's going on in Sacramento County. Again, thanks for bringing this back. And, you know, I I read through all of the material and 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 much of what the city of Atwater did, I believe, in their resolution was state that the businesses in their community have a long history and are the backbone of the economy of their their city. And and they're, and and pretty much put in there that they were, they were protecting themselves from any liabilities related to consequences that businesses may have. So pretty interesting. And and certainly, the Cal OES letter, which I had read before, was was good to have as a backdrop to see, you know, what reaction the governor's office has had. So I'd like to hear from my other council members and see what their thoughts are.
All right, any other council member? Councilmember Farmer?
Yeah, along with what Rich said, yeah, it was very, the resolution they passed was very, basically a symbolic action. And obviously, since we've discussed that, we've had some some relaxing of the mandates from the state, which I was very pleased to see. And I think it's a good start. I know there's still some work to do. We have some businesses still suffering. But, yeah, I mean, circumstances are a little bit different now than they were at the time. But it was, it was very, I was very proud to see a small, a small community like Atwater, which is almost a sister city to us in size and everything, take such bold action. So I commend them for that. And with that, I don't really have anything to add on this subject at the moment. Thank you.
Councilmember Campion.
Yes, you know, I've looked at the resolution. And, you know, I I guess I'd look at it a little differently. This actually much more than just simply symbolic. The the resolution clearly states that the city of Atwater shall not, with other agencies, enforce the provisions of the state or county regarding COVID. And I think that my biggest concerns is that it would be in opposition to standing orders of both state and county directives. So to that extent, I I think that it has a little more meat on it than than maybe it's being given credit for here tonight. But given the circumstances where the city is, you know, the number of businesses that are able to open, almost 90% with the restrictions, I I think the city of Galt's in a good shape at this point. Thank you.
Councilmember Lamson.
Yes, I would like to see a few more things allowed to open, like physical therapy and things like that. But in reference to going against the mandates, I actually looked up who has state licenses. And it's more than the nail shops and the hairdressers. It's every contractor, it's your concrete worker, it's your electrician, preschool teachers, regular teachers. There's lots of businesses that have state licenses. And I'm glad we're not willing to risk those. And hopefully, we can work together and get this city open. And it's looking, it's looking better, but I'm hoping we don't have to take a step back. That's my prayer. And thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lamson. Tom, my question, just the information, I believe you said 89% business open in the Galt, right?
Yes.
And I don't know, it might be a confidential, can we identify which businesses are closed? Still closed, there is no access to be opened yet?
Yeah, so how we, how we determined that, it was to take a look at our, the types of businesses, business licenses from the city. And we went through those. I I don't have off the top of my head which ones were in tier three and wouldn't be able to be closed. But I think that since the governor's announcement last, late last week, that they're going to be issuing guidance and that then leave that up to the timing, data-driven and scientific-driven timing for for the counties. It would be our intention to work expeditiously with the county for any businesses that are in tier three. I think what you're really looking at are things like what I referred to, the nail salons, the nail salons themselves, any type of business where there's physical touch, with the exception of hair and hair salons and barber shops. They, so long as they utilize the prescribed PPE and social distancing, hair salons and barber shops can do it. But nail salons must remain closed. And then some of the higher-risk businesses would be some of, well, candidly, I think I'd have to look up what's what's on that list. I think that we may be able to identify a certain list. And I think Amy Mendez, our economic development manager, did a fantastic job of putting that on, is on the line. And maybe, Amy, do you have any further information that would answer the mayor's question?
Yeah, for the most part, when, you know, I went through evaluating the business license listing, it is nail salons. You know, we have a couple of day spa type, you know, the cosmetologists that do facials, that do skincare, they're not allowed to operate any type of massage therapy. Recreation-type facilities such as karate studios or gymnastics studios, those types of things are still not able to operate. So those, from what I can recall, that was the majority of the types of businesses that are still restricted. But other than that, we do have a number of businesses that are now able to, you know, open and operate.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any council member, any other discussion on this one? Otherwise, we can move to the next agenda item. And Tom, you want to make that statement or?
Oh, yes. And so you had asked for a comment relative to what we're doing to, with respect to the current situation in the region. And what I'd like to do is introduce Chief Todd Sockman to provide that information to the council and community. Chief?
Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I want to take a moment to address the concerns related to looting in the suburban area of Sacramento. To be sure, we have deployed additional resources in response to those concerns here in Galt. But first, I think it's appropriate to take a moment and reflect on the events that led to the current circumstances, which is regrettable and unnecessary death of George Floyd in Minneapolis. What I saw in the video was wrong, tragic and inexcusable. Mr. Floyd's life was taken due to the actions of this officer and/or the inactions of the other officers on scene. It should never have happened, and the officers should be held accountable and justice should be served. All of the law enforcement personnel I've talked with agree and understand the anger that's being expressed in the peaceful protest nationwide. I'm angry, and we don't want this incident to cast a broad condemnation on the hundreds of thousands of good moral police officers that protect our communities every day. As a peace officer here in Galt, we will honor George Floyd's peaceful life by maintaining the highest level of professionalism, maintaining the highest standard and holding ourselves. the highest level of professionalism, maintaining the highest standard, and holding ourselves accountable to the community and to the profession, respecting all people, hiring the best people with the highest moral character, continuing our tradition of transparency and providing a well-trained staff. The Galt Police Department has been committed to the community outreach and engagement with all parts of our community, sometimes having tough discussions in order to better understand one another, but always remaining committed, moving forward as one. Those discussions have made, have been happening for years, and the communication has continued during these difficult times. I just want to say, our city is amazing because of each and every person that makes up our great community, and we all want to keep it that way. In the greater Sacramento area, we have witnessed protests that turned to looting and riotous behavior over the past several days. In the past 24 hours, one of our local gyms had an attempted break-in, and that investigation is ongoing. There are a number of other rumors that are connected to the criminal activity related to the protests and looting, and, uh, some of those rumors are saying that they, that we've had those things bleed over into our city. I want to let the council know and the community know that everything else besides what I've already mentioned are rumors. Um, so, in a larger picture of what is playing out in our region today, we are constantly monitoring what's happening and constantly communicating with our sister law enforcement agencies and working to verify any potential issues for our city and our residents. And we take, and we will take all the necessary steps to provide the safety for our community. I think with that, I'm, I'm open to any questions that the council might have, but, uh, I, I, I just want to make sure that, um, that that got out. That we're, we're, Galt Police Department is doing a great job of maintaining the peace in our city, and we will continue to do that.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Any council member, any comment, any question?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I do, and I'll be really brief. I just want to thank the chief and, uh, city manager and staff and, and all the police officers that are out there working, uh, day and night, trying to ensure the safety of our citizens. They do a fine job at that. Uh, but I want to thank the chief and, and city manager for providing us, uh, the council with updated factual information as they, uh, get it and also as they, um, they see misinformation being spread. And I think that's important. Uh, so thank you for that, and, uh, we really appreciate the work you're doing. You guys are putting in lots of long hours, and, uh, so are our officers out there, not only on the streets, but, uh, the support staff. And so I would just like, uh, Chief, if you could, uh, thank them all for us, uh, or at least for me. Um, but, uh, they, they're doing a fine job.
I, I appreciate that. Yeah, I mean, we have some amazing, incredible employees here in the Galt Police Department, and, uh, they are out there being highly vigilant and, uh, keeping an eye on what's going on in our city. And I'm, I'm really, really proud of them, the efforts and the work they're doing.
Anybody else have any comment? And I would like to thank you, Chief, doing an, doing an excellent job. And keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody was on, was asking something or? All right, at least nobody have no question. The next agenda item is I, number three, Public Work Department. Subject, Blue Dog Distribution Rent Deferral Lease Agreement Amendment. Mike Seling or City Manager?
Yeah, no, uh, thank you, Mayor, and, uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, I'll try to make this quick. Uh, this is a continuation, uh, from the May 5th council meeting. Uh, the quick background on this is that the city, as the owner of the industrial warehouse property at 140 Interplace Court, uh, at being the owner, one of our tenants, uh, Blue Dog just, uh, distributing, contacted city staff, uh, shortly after the COVID, uh, order from the governor back in, uh, mid-March, uh, anyway, contacted us, uh, requesting rent relief, uh, due to the COVID-19's, uh, impact on their business, uh, which is a craft beverage distribution, uh, business. Uh, so city staff researched the issue and recommended a rent relief program. However, at the, uh, May 5th, uh, council meeting, after some discussion, council directed staff to bring back a rent deferral proposal, uh, instead. And before you tonight is the proposed rent deferral. The key points of the deferral are, it basically sets the rent at a fixed 50% uh, for four months, and those months are April through July. Uh, it minimizes, that minimizes the staff time, so we don't have to verify their uh, financial information. Um, and then there's a one-month ramp-up period, which is proposed thereafter. And that ramp-up period is where they would just pay 100% of their normal rent. Uh, and then after that, it establishes a 12-month payback period for the deferred amount. So essentially, for those four months where they're only paying half of their rent, they would pay, uh, basically that, that money back over the following 12 months. And that would be September through, uh, September of 2020 through August of 2021. Uh, so they pay 100% of their monthly rent all that time, and then 1/12 of the deferred amount over the four months. Uh, and then it also extends the lease until September 30th of 2021. So with that, those are the key points of the, uh, of the rent deferral, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Any council member have any question?
Mr. Mayor, if I may speak?
Yeah, go ahead, uh, Councilmember Farmer.
Uh, just first, I want to thank, uh, Mike and your staff for, for, uh, going back out to, to our tenant, um, with the, with the, you know, the, the direction of the council to, um, to propose this. And, um, I think it's, I think it worked out well. I think we, we made a good compromise there. Um, you know, uh, it helps them and it, and also, uh, you know, helps the city in that we, you know, are not losing any, any, uh, of that income. And so, uh, I would also like to thank Blue Dog, if, uh, you know, if they have any watching, that we appreciate, um, your willingness to, to compromise and be flexible on this, and that, uh, you know, we hope that they recover soon and, uh, and get back to their, um, their, uh, main volume of business. So, again, thank you, uh, Mike and your staff. That's, that's all I had to say.
Thank you. All right, any other council member? If there is no comment from another council member, I would like to mention Mike. Mike, this is really appreciative to go back, uh, to negotiate with Blue Dog. Especially that's the way council wants. Uh, you know, deferment, we do not lose the money. Whatever, we helping them so they can keep their business. And when the business will come back, they should be able to pay us back whatever is deferred. And thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Any, any public comment? Tina came up?
I have not received written comment on this item.
Rose, any comment on the Zoom app?
I have no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. Uh, council, if there is no discussion, I would like to, uh, make a recommended action, review the proposed revision of city con, oh, sorry about that. Uh, so, adopted resolution approving a lease amendment to temporarily defer 50% of rent owned by Blue Dog Distribution due to COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, do we have a motion out there? Is, is moved by council member Farmer?
I think that was council member Campion.
Is moved by council member Campion. Anybody second? Second by fa- council member Farmer? Tina may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Member Farmer? Council member Campion? I think it's just not. Campion?
He, he made the motion. He probably just is having technical difficulties.
Right.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passes with 5 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next agenda item, J Communication. Tina, any communication?
Yes, I received, um...
In votes in the affirmative.
That was council member Campion saying he voted in the affirmative.
Okay, thank you. Um, I did receive a few more comments. Um, uh, the, the next one's Vanessa Soto. And again, it is the same carbon copy of the previous letters read. Next one is Severa Belush, a carbon copy of the previous comments already read. Jessica Lyon, a carbon copy of previous comment. Joshua Butler, a carbon copy of what was already read. And Hannah McDonald, but the attachment does not open. It says it's not readable, so I'm not, I don't know what the letter says.
It, it does have the same title of the document that was previously read to the...
It does have the same title of previous, but it will not open.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak?
Yeah, go ahead, uh, Councilmember Farmer.
I just, I'm not asking the comment, any of those comments to be read because we know they're a copy of earlier. But I do know that the first part of our meeting, the telecast, there was an issue, so people missed all that. I just wanted to recap that it, that these comments were, um, from citizens concerned about, uh, safety in Galt, um, uh, regarding of police and, uh, the, kind of some discussion on the internet about militias being formed and, and people arming themselves and so on. And there was, it was basically expressing their great concern with that and, and how that would affect the community and the citizens. That's just kind of an over recap. I, I don't know if you need to read it again, but I just saying that because people are, don't have any idea of what we're talking about. They say a carbon copy, so.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I, uh, have the floor for a second?
Yeah, go ahead, uh, Vice Mayor.
I'd like to ask the city clerk if she could, um, forward that specific letter to us. Um, it was read kind of fast, and I, I'm, I'm misunderstood, I think, a couple of points. So I'd just like for it to be, uh, forward, uh, so we can have a look at it.
Yes, I will send them to you.
All right, thank you. We can, moving forward, the, I'm going to adjourn the South Galt City Council meeting and going to reconvene to the Galt Successor Agency. The agenda item is successor agency to the former development agency meeting. Tina may have a roll call, please.
Board member Lozano?
Here.
Board member Farmer?
Here.
Board member Campion?
Here.
Board member Lamson? Here. Board member Sandu?
Here. A public comment?
No items received.
Thank you.
I have no hands raised.
Thank you. Uh, information consent calendar, minute of December 3rd, 2019 meeting, accept the minute as submitted.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Lozano? Anybody have a second? Second by council member Campion. Tina may have a vote roll call, please.
Board member Lozano?
Aye.
Board member Farmer?
Aye.
Board member Campion? He made the motion, so difficulty. Okay. Board member Lamson?
Aye.
Board member Sandu?
Aye. Motion pass 2520. Thank you. Next agenda item is departmental, subject, approval of fifth amendment to the honor participating grant and loan agreement with DNS Development. Ms. Tyson?
Good evening again. The, the item before you tonight for the successor agency to the former Galt Redevelopment Agency is a loan amendment for the DNS loans that provided funding for the restoration and rehabilitation of the building used by Brewster's Restaurant. The former redevelopment agency provided loans to DNS beginning in 2008 and made, uh, to make improvements to the historic building on Fourth Street. Over the years, the loan provisions have been met and payments have been made to successor agency. However, due to the COVID-19 restrictions, many businesses have closed temporarily, including Brewster's. In response, DNS has provided rent deferrals to Brewster's and have requested loan deferrals from the city. This proposed fifth amendment to loan agreements would provide a defer, deferral of up to six months, um, with loan payments resuming no later than September 30th, uh, 2020. This would cover the period from the last payment date, which was in March, through current and allow for longer if needed for recovery. Uh, this amendment also consolidates all remaining loans into one repayment schedule. Um, interest would continue to accrue and to be paid. Um, this is, uh, loan deferral only and does not give any forgiveness of future principal or interest. Um, this amendment will become a model for other cities throughout the county who are experiencing similar situations, um, with their successor agency loans. Um, uh, we're working with other cities within the county on this. Um, also, I wanted to mention that Iris Young from BBK is available with me to answer any questions you may have. She's on the line. Um, she's been working, uh, with the city's redevelopment agency and successor agency for many years, and she provided, uh, for us the amendment documents that are presented tonight to you. Um, with that, I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Tyson. Council member, any council member have any question, any comment, discussion? Vice Mayor Lozano? Council member Farmer? Council member Campion? Councilmember Lamson? If nobody have a question, I have a few question, uh, Ms. Tyson. One thing is, uh, how much, uh, amount we going to forgiveness because they qualify, right?
The prior forgiveness, there were multiple items on that. I think there were two different items. Um, those have already been met and, um, uh, all of the provisions of those forgiveness that have occurred. The amount of money, um, hold on just a second. I know I have that with me. Are you asking about the latest one or the prior ones?
Yes.
Iris, do you have, happen to have that handy? Looks like the latest one, no, that was in 2012.
Ms. Tyson, if it's not, that's okay. We can get that information later.
Okay.
My, my other question is because they asking the deferment, right?
Correct.
And the property they giving on the rent, right?
They're, they're giving.
Right?
Yeah, they're giving a rent for it.
So that's mean they might be not getting the rent from the renter because due to COVID-19, that's why they reason to ask to ferment or especially on that project, but they have a, some other project, uh, too.
That is correct. They are giving a rent ferment. Um, and we understand that the renter, um, may be able to pay that rent sooner than the six months, but this allows for that accommodation from April, at least until current or until the end of September.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, if any council member have no question, I'm going to move on the recommender action. Adopted resolution approving the fifth amendment to the honor participation grant and loan agreement with DNS Development. Do we have a motion out there?
Moved.
Move by Vice Mayor Lozano.
Again.
Second by council member Farmer. Tina may have a vote.
Yes, uh, board member Lozano.
Aye.
Board member Farmer.
Aye.
Board member Campion.
Aye.
Board member Lamson.
Aye.
Board member Sandu.
Aye. Motion passes with five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I would like to adjourn the Galt Successor Agency and reconvene to the Galt City Council. Comment by staff. Mister Headland, if you, any comment, if you ask your staff, any comments?
I'm mute, Tom.
Sorry. Certainly, Mister Mayor. Uh, Mister Selling, any comments from public works?
Yeah, just real quick, I wanted to thank the council for uh the efforts on Blue Dog. Uh, we greatly appreciate it. I think it's shows a lot of concern for the local businesses and I know they greatly appreciated it. Um, the other thing I wanted to pass on is uh they indicated they started to hire people back, so it sounds like they're they're already on the rebound, so that was good news. And then I just also wanted to uh uh share my appreciation for my staff and and also finance staff, city manager on on the budgets. Spent a lot of work with the uh and for the city manager's leadership too and in taking those bold steps last year to put us in such a good position. So uh hats off to all the staff. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mike. Uh, Chief Sockman, do you have anything additional that you'd like to share?
Uh, just real brief, uh, we, just like Mike just uh said, we we're still actively recruiting. We have a couple new officers that are going to be starting soon, uh, so we're really pleased with that and we're working hard on the um dispatchers. And so uh staff have been working extremely hard through the COVID and through all the stuff that's going on right now. And so again, I've said it before, I say it again, I say it to their faces, uh, I'm I'm extremely proud of all the officers that we have working here.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Ms. Tyson, any comments from finance?
I want to thank council um for their support of the budget and their attention to it. I also obviously want to thank all the departments for their hard work and uh my staff who put in countless hours. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mister Arriats.
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, echo everybody's thoughts on the budget and really thank everybody involved. Finance department did a great job. Uh, I'd also like to thank my staff. Uh, they've done a great job in making sure those development projects come through and uh really help that budget situation. So the community development staff just did an outstanding job.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Van Stein.
Uh, no updates this evening.
No updates. Uh, Mister Solis.
Yeah, I just want to remind staff and our citizens that uh we have our farmer's market kicking off this uh Friday I at on the Fourth Street Promenade. I hope to see some people out there. Um, I want to let you all know that I appreciate you all. Claire, all the weekends that you spend in your office. Thank you. We appreciate you. Have a good night.
Ms. Mendez, our economic development manager, any comments?
No, nothing further for this evening. Thank you.
Uh, city attorney Hood?
Uh, no, I just uh congratulations to those graduates. Everybody's getting ready to run out and be off uh into the world. So with that, I'll make sure, keep it short. Thank you.
And for my part, I would like to congratulate all the graduates. Uh, Simon lives across the street from us and uh his picture is prominently displayed. He's a uh gonna be a graduate from Liberty High tonight, so congratulations to uh to him and and all the graduates, both at Liberty High and uh and Galt High. I do want to note, uh, council member Farmer made this point uh earlier as we started our meeting. Um, a lot of techno law, technology goes into that and our service provider outside of the city hall uh that does the live streaming had some sort of a hiccup with their system. And uh, as soon as we realized that, that I think the meeting started to stream and then stopped for some reason. And so IT got on the phone with them um and uh was able to work through with them uh what the issue was on on the the live stream groups and they rebooted their servers and so the live stream came back. Um, and I think it's been uh good for the rest of the meeting. But council member Farmer did note uh that, uh, and I don't know whether or not this actually occurred, but in the event that um the uh that particular live stream went down as that public uh comment letter was being read, one of the things we're going to be doing is putting all of the public comment for each meeting up on our website so that the public can go and and see that. Uh, it will be uh shown on any um recast of our meeting. Uh, the Sacramento Metro Cable comes to our facility. They tape the meetings here at the facility. They just don't live, uh, have the ability to live stream them. We use a separate company for that. And so uh when the uh meeting is recast on Metro Cable, uh, all of that public comment will be there. There there was no break in what Sacramento Metro Cable does for us, but I did want the council to know that we will be placing all of those public comments that we receive on PubCom uh uh at city of galt.org. We'll be placing those um on our website uh for everyone to see. And of course, we'll send it to the council as you requested tonight, uh, that letter. I do also want to just take a minute to thank staff, all the department heads. Uh, Claire Tyson in particular, but I want to call out Michelle Neely, who has been a twenty-five year, at least a twenty-five year employee of this city, who is our budget revenue manager, who um is, you know, one of those people behind the scenes doing an incredible volume of work to not only put numbers together, to but to make sure they're accurate and and do that. And then her uh compatriot in in finance, Matthew Boring, who is our accounting manager, he does a uh tremendous amount of work, a lot of tedious work and again, ticking and tying, as they say in the accounting business, all of the the various pieces of information. Kathy Burris, uh, who uh works with Claire is Claire's administrative assistant. Uh, the document you see, having it put together, having it proofread, having, you know, uh the the whole production end of things, as well as a whole series of other items uh Kathy takes care of and then the the rest of the finance staff and then clearly each and every department. These budgets originate in each and every department. And I may provide direction, I may provide guidance, but they originate in each and every department and uh we we go through a very long budget calendar, putting it together. And I I want to thank all of them uh for that. And uh, that concludes my comments, Mister Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yes, I'll I'll be brief here, but and and I am going to repeat um uh some of what has already been said because I think it's important. Um, we as council members, one of our main purposes and the main jobs is to balance a budget and and approve a budget. And we did that tonight. It's balanced. Um, so I want to thank the staff for digging deep this this last year. Uh, and uh you guys have done an excellent job and at trimming the fat and uh and and actually in most cases, you know, deboning the uh, taking the meat off the bone, uh, because I know you're working with uh really, really lean budgets. Uh, but I also want to thank my colleagues who uh we made some difficult decisions this year and it has to do with um, you know, the last several months and uh, it's not always um a fun job uh doing that, but we did it. And uh, we made this budget uh now future easier to manage, I believe. Um, these are the structural changes I think that Ms. Tyson spoke about earlier uh that we uh we we did early on. And so thank you for that and I look forward to uh tackling it again uh in a few months when we have to look at our uh income and as it's related to the COVID nineteen issue. So thank you all very much. And 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 when I'm, when I say staff, I mean everyone. Uh, not only department heads, but everyone else that helped provide that service. So, thank you.
Councilmember Campion. Councilmember.
Nothing more other than uh appreciate.
Thank you.
Associated documents, thank you.
Councilmember Lanson, are you out there? Councilmember Farmer.
Yes, thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, for those of you that know, I believe Councilwoman Lamson left to go to the school for her commitment um for that. Um, I just wanted to uh say, just to echo the comments to others, to make it brief, uh, thank you for all, everybody had, was involved, the budget, city manager, finance team, all the department heads. Um, you know, it's a, you know, it's a huge effort and 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 you all know who you are. I probably don't even know everybody involved, but you know who you are. Thank you. And uh, thank you. I'm glad we got that, you know, we could turn a corner on that finally. And uh, secondly, I just wanted to, and I don't want to get into this conversation too much, but I just want to remind city manager that I very much, you know, want to um consider looking at the, you know, getting back to live meetings as soon as possible. I know you had promised the council you're going to look at, see, you know, what what uh guidelines and how we would do it and with the social distancing and so on. And I just want to make sure that we um you know, get uh, you know, stay on track with looking at that as soon as possible. I think it'd be important because you know, I think it's, it'd be good for the council to set an example, I think, of 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 how we're trying to return to some normalcy. And I think that would be a good step in that direction to to lead by example in doing that. And so I I would like to do that. And um, and lastly, and not least, um, congratulations to all the graduates, Liberty Ranch High School, Galt High School, twenty twenty. Um, it's definitely going to be a memorable year. I can only imagine the things you guys will talk about to your children about the experiences you had with uh graduating in in such a tumultuous year. So uh, you know, we wish all the best. It's going to make us proud, I'm sure. So congratulations to all you. And um, with that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Farmer. Uh, first of all, I would like to thank you, the city manager and his all his staff, working hard to balance the budget. You know, it's it's hard to balance the budget when we have a shortfall. And then the more important, uh, I I was glad, you know, this budget approved by five to zero. And that's, I I I was kind of proud of all the council member. They spent a lot of time to read the report and look up how we can come up uh with all uh all 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 the budget approved. Uh, the second thing, I would really like to congratulation all the high school graduates. Liberty Ranch and Galt High School. And hopefully we will join them, but uh, I will see. The third thing is there is a lot of, lot of going on this our country right now. We are going through very challenging time. We must stand together. We must do better and work towards positive change. I would also like to say thank you for our Galt Police Department, for everything they do. You do for our community. I know your job is very hard, especially in this time like this. I thank you for the chief. He's doing an excellent job. And uh, for that, if uh nobody question, I would like to adjourn the meeting and see you in next meeting. Everybody have a good evening.